Meeting is now convened. Welcome to the special town council budget work session, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The pledge allegiance, Mr. Smith, due to your service to the town, we'd like you to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his good soul, with liberty and justice.
Are there any public announcements? The staff have any public announcements? No. In that case, the action item today is a presentation to council followed by council discussion of town of Cave Creek draft for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget, followed by public comment. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Mayor members of council, we went through the recording and some draft minutes and Mitzi has prepared a PowerPoint to go through item by item of all of the changes suggested by the council and items for further discussion. So if we could just start with those and clarify that we're keeping it in, or if we're going to add something in, we can get through those hopefully fairly quickly. It's actually a long.
Missy, did you sleep?
I did.
That's a lot of work. Thank you.
We have page numbers. So as we get to each one, we'll, we'll call out a page number for you to turn to that section. We have two handouts. If when we get to those areas, we'll we'll reference the couple of handouts and hopefully we can get through this fairly streamlined.
Do we have a silent roll call? Thank you.
Okay. Let's start. Yes.
And you should see that on your screen, I hope. Did you guys see that?
Yes.
Presentation. Okay. So these, as Carrie said, are the budget changes from our Monday, April tenth, I budget council meeting. The first one was I'm, we added columns showing the difference between the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. And we also added a column showing the percentage change between the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget and the two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. So you'll see that in flipping back through your worksheets, those two new columns are the furthest ones to the right side of the page. So the first set will be from estimated actuals to budget and the next set of change will be the budget to budget. Any questions on that? Okay, and then the, the next item that we had to discuss was the support for the one percent sales tax increase that was given in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. And I will take you through the support for that one percent increase. So the Government Finance Officers Association, which is GFOA, in their best practices in financial reporting in the budget preparation process, it states a conservative forecast underestimates revenue and builds in a layer of contingency for expenditures. This might make it harder to balance the budget, but it reduces the risk of an actual shortfall. This is the best practice that I followed and am recommending with the one percent increase. And this is why. So I've got a couple of dot points on this slide and then the rest are on the next slide. But I examine the collections for the July through March of the current fiscal year and past fiscal years. There were eight different tax, sales tax revenue categories that were examined. And in looking at those eight categories, retail sales were up twenty-three percent or six hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars and the restaurant and bar sales tax were up six percent, which was seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to date over the last year, with the other six of the eight tax categories being down two hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars fiscal year to date. Of those increases in retail sales and in the restaurant and bar sales for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, almost fifty percent, which is three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty, was extra money that we had gotten into the town due to a one-time sales tax audit revenue monies. So that three hundred thousand came to us from audits that were conducted by the Department of Revenue was extra money that ended up in coming in, but those are one-time, not ongoing ongoing revenues that were in there. So also the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three estimated town sales tax is projected to be almost one percent or fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars lower than what we had actually received in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. So based on these trends of our town collections and the uncertainties in the current economy and the world, the one percent sales tax increase in my professional opinion is reasonable and conservative to use.
Are you? With a smile.
So. Any questions from council on that?
So it's a one percent. So it's a one percent increase in projected revenues, not a one percent additional tax, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That one percent is over.
I just want to clarify that we're not asking for more tax.
No.
I have a question. The sales tax audit that you referred to, why was that conducted? And is it, are you sure it's one time only, or is it one time every ten years or?
You know, I, I believe the Department of Revenue does those audits randomly throughout all cities and towns throughout the state. So that's just, we got picked and that's what we got. So that's not something we receive every year. Sometimes it's not that much. It's just, you know, a lesser amount, sometimes a little more. It just kind of depends.
And in terms of the detail, do we know which businesses were audited and the detail, the alignment of how much people owed?
Yeah, we do know that information, but we have to take confidentiality oaths through the Department of Revenue. It's not public information.
Okay.
So that, the detail I can't share, just the, the overall numbers I can.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item from Monday was related to our compensation. And we had included a six percent market adjustment in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget. And we also added another two and a half percent that we set aside as compensation pay in the town manager budget for all the general fund departments. That told sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. You can see that amount on page four of your packet in the town manager department.
So I want to make a clarification. When we were talking about that, I think we were talking about, I don't remember which one of your staff mentioned, Carrie. I don't know which one of your staff mentioned that we were having a lot of turnover at the lower levels. So that two and a half percent set aside should go after those not salary, you know, higher end people.
Mayor Councilmember, we intend to move forward quickly or soon with the compensation study. So we believe that we can, we'll have some data available to discuss that with, with council as well.
Yeah, but I recall the conversation being that it was related to people who were primarily hourly or on the lower end of the pay scale.
That, that is correct. And we, we've been able to adjust the salaries within the range when offering the position, but part of the compensation study will actually look at the ranges themselves and see if they need to be adjusted. So as long as they're within the range, we've been able to accommodate the additional salary.
Okay. So for the, all the general fund departments that was placed and the personnel section of the town manager budget on page four, it was also set aside separately in the utility funds, wastewater, that amount that was set aside was eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. You can see that on page forty-eight of your packet. For Cave Creek Water, it was nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars and that you can see on page fifty-one of the packet and Desert Hills Water was nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And that is shown in the personnel section on page fifty-four of your packet. Any additional questions on that? Okay. The next item is an increase. We increased the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget by twenty thousand dollars for web hosting in the administration budget on page six of your packet to make the town's website user friendly and improve the look and feel for that. The next item also, you can see on page six of your packet, we increased the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget by twenty-five thousand dollars for computer software in the administration budget to cover additional licensing costs. We also updated the legal services and the town council department goals and objectives. The legal services department goals and objectives you can find on page eight of your packet. And the town council goals and objectives that were updated are on page twenty-three.
Mayor and council member Rhodes actually was the one that asked for the update and I had a copy of the information he shared with me. But I wanted to go back and, and clarify that GFOA requires the department descriptions to tie to strategic plans and the goals there. So what we tried to do in, in legal services as well as in the town council is generally without too much specifics about a particular project or you know, in a goal or ordinance or whatever, we put in the strategic goal titles and generally what the objectives would be under that goal based on the description that was in the draft strategic plan. So for example, provide regular communication and sound legal advice to the town council and some general objectives for the town's attorney, but then more specifically on page twenty-three in the town council department description. We tried to consolidate as much into the one page of the governance, financial viability, community culture, water supplies and infrastructure and public streets, safety and services category. And then there was another goal with financial viability and public street safety and services. And generally, these are things that are financial and in the proposed draft budget. So we have, and then there's a couple other things that the council has discussed about being more interactive with the business community, sponsoring a forum. We had one with the business owners already. And so this is another one into the future. Updating zoning code and town code regulations without being specific about each, each individual action you might do that will require your meeting with the planning commission on the, to discuss the zoning code and prioritize those. And then the balanced budget, of course, under financial viability, walking path completion plan, median landscape funding and CIP, funding for critical water infrastructure projects and funding in two thousand and twenty-four budget to fully fund one-third of the remaining two thousand and twenty pavement management plan project. So those are the cost-related items are already in the budget. And so if you'd like to change anything or add anything, we could do that.
I would like to change one word in that description. It says the mayor and the six town council members of the elected set of citizens, it should say representatives.
I have one suggestion, Carrie. On page eight, under legal, I think the financial viability is important to include under this category as well as community culture. And I think you could use the last bullet point, obtain the most favorable judgments in civil cases.
Okay.
Under.
We'll add that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the next item at the request of Nina Spitzer, the Tourism Bureau, five thousand dollars, and this can be seen on page twelve, by the way, of your packet. Five thousand dollars has been added to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four proposed budget under the advertising line and in the development services budget to cover advertising by the Tourism Bureau in the Arizona Official State Tourist Guide.
Was that all that she requested? She asked for eight thousand. We put in additional five, so we made it even ten. She got more than she asked for.
Okay, very.
But, but there's good, it's some good use.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Which line is that?
The second.
Advertising.
Increased.
Page twelve.
Twelve. Under economic development, which is just down under the development services and then under advertising, marketing promotion. Well, we increased that portion of the account from five to ten of the total twenty.
Sorry, it's under the contracts and services item under advertising. The section up.
Oh, I thought it was.
Yeah. It went from. No, it went, it, what was in there on Monday was five thousand under that line and now it's ten.
Okay, I'm misreading.
No, I said, I told you, economic development, it's up above under contracts and services. And then you see advertising there.
Oh, advertising.
Sorry, but it's ten, right?
What's the difference between that and the, and the marketing promotion? That's twenty thousand dollars.
Luke, in the marketing, was that the concierge program?
Mayor Councilman Rhodes, the marketing and promotion accounts for the local landmarks program, additional advertising, different media and the concierge tour, which we do biannually. And that's all that comes to mind currently. There is some, there are some dollars for print media in there as well. Generally, the advertising portion under contracts and services would be for advertising for cases, sending out letters to surrounding property owners, things like that. That's our biggest chunk of advertising under contracts and services. So. So.
Well, I was trying to figure out why you have two different lines.
Yeah, advertising is generally specified for cases. So I, I think the additional money was supposed to go in the, under the marketing and promotion for what the Tourism Bureau was asking for. Was that put under the advertising?
That was put under advertising.
Yeah, it should be under economic development.
Okay. So we're not. So we're going to take, we're going to take the ten down to five.
Correct.
Put it down with the, so the total on that line would be thirty thousand. And the total on the line prior would be one million, seven hundred and ninety.
Marketing and promotion under economic development would go, it's proposed at twenty thousand, it would be twenty-five. And advertising under contracts and services would stay at five thousand. Please.
Okay.
The contracts and services, instead of being ten thousand, will be five thousand, right?
For advertising, right?
For advertising. And then down on the bottom, marketing promotion becomes twenty-five thousand, correct?
Correct.
So the total for that line will be thirty thousand.
The total for economic development will be thirty thousand.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay. The next item that we had from Monday night was the breakdown of building permits and fee revenue. This included in your packet and it was, was not given to you on Monday night, but it's found on page two of your packet. This is the general fund revenue breakdown, specific breakdown. So it shows you what exactly is included in local taxes, local fees, state shared revenue and miscellaneous revenue. So the, the breakdown of the building permits and fee revenue includes the building permit line. It also includes engineering plan reviews, planning and zoning fees and right-of-way fees. And I have shown on the slide, this is what's shown on, on the slide currently is from page two of your packet. And I've got highlighted those items in yellow that make up the building permit fee revenue. So off to the right, you'll see that total amount shown is yeah, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. That's what was proposed for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four.
And, and does that mean we are or are not recovering via fees the cost of developmental activities? My rough.
So yeah, if you look on, in order to determine that, we'll have to look at the development services expenditures as well as the public works engineering page. So that would be page twelve for development services and page twenty-seven for the public works.
So that we'd be comparing the one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars to the roughly five hundred thousand dollars of fee revenue?
Well, I'm the and I'm sorry, mayor. Where did you get the million five that you were reading?
Well, the, the proposed budget expenditures on page twelve for developmental services is one million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And the when I, when I add up the, roughly add up the, the, the local fees, the building permits, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, engineering plan reviews, planning zoning fees and right-of-way fees, it's roughly five hundred thousand. So that's eight hundred thousand dollars difference between those two. Is it fair to conclude that, that that we have that that money is not being covered by fees from, from those two, that little analysis I just did?
That is correct. Also included in the personnel section though of that million two. If you recall from Monday night, we had rolled up the personnel from the other divisions as well into that development services. So not all of those salaries are related to building.
So the question for town staff, as I have for the last five, ten years, are we, are we recovering through the fees, the cost of developmental services, including utility engineering for utilities and what the town engineer does and we're recovering out through our fees and planning fees and building safety inspection permit fees?
No.
Mayor, wouldn't you include the construction sales tax in that offset that eight hundred number you're talking about?
No.
No.
And the remainder of the, the remainder of the expenses that aren't covered by the fees themselves are paid for from our
So I think the real question is, why did we, why are we eight hundred thousand dollars less? I think, is that what?
Well, I mean, I.
What, what is the reason for the going for the half roughly of the revenue?
We have never covered the total expense for the department or even the personnel by fees.
So we're saying that we're going from four hundred and sixteen thousand, which are the, are the actuals as of January. So let's say the estimated is seven hundred and thirteen. Next year, we're going to three ninety-three. That doesn't make sense. That just, but I mean, it doesn't pass the giggle test.
Okay, so I do, I'm.
I'm, I'm not picking on you. I just want to know why.
No, I, I understand the question, but that is because.
The revenue projections are projected by the amount of development projected for the town, the number of single-family homes, commercial projects, infrastructure improvements, tenant improvements. And so we go through, the staff goes through each one of them and based on those numbers for building permits and engineering zoning, water capacity and wastewater capacity fees, based on those numbers that those are the, the number of permits and the number of zoning entitlement cases and all of the construction are estimated and that is how we come up with the fees. And when construction goes down, the fees goes down.
Okay, I, I understand that. But then on engineering plan reviews, we have that going up on planning and zoning, we have that going way down. And then we have right-of-way, that's going up. It would kind of seem they would all track together, not maybe exactly, but there would be a general trend line.
Yes, Mayor Councilman Rhodes, they in a perfect world, they all would, but actually in development, what we see is it is cyclical when planning and development is very busy and our fees are, the fees collected are way up. Typically, construction doesn't track with that. It's got a, it's got to go through a phase of getting through entitlements and getting through that background before you get into permitting, construction, reviews and those types of things. So that's why we see right now, we will have Hidden Canyon coming in soon, very shortly here in the next couple of weeks. That'll be a, a big fee that'll hit this current fiscal year we're in. But then the engineering fees for the permitting that come out of it through right-of-way permits will hit in the next fiscal year. And that's how we've projected it in here. So that's why those projections look the way they do. And it's it, we can go back, you know, I, I've been with the town a long time. We can go back and actually look at that and see that we're usually pretty dead on. What I can tell you is we don't want to over project and oversell what the revenues are going to be. We, we take a really conservative approach.
I understand. I would like to see that analysis, to show over time how it changes.
Sure.
Well, as long as you're up there. Now, when most expenses, personnel expenses are, are going to stay the same without personnel action for a long period of time, but the construction fees, we're in a boom. And we're not covering when the construction sales taxes drop, you're going to go into a deficit. A bigger deficit. So my, my strategy on that would be to balance those things out, not depend upon the construction taxes because they can drop substantially. And we don't want to be laying people off during those times. So I, you've got, you've got one solid fixed expense compared against a variable expense. So that doesn't seem to be very good business practice. So that doesn't seem to be very good business practice, but I'm not sure about government practice.
Mayor, um, Mitzi is going to cover that. Um, we could cover it now if you'd like.
No, I, I,
Well, we, we break out.
You know, it, it isn't a budget issue. What, what it is, is a, a fee issue and a, and a principle and a strategy on should the people using the service pay for the service? And that shouldn't be a part of this meeting. I'm just bringing it up as an issue that this here lends strength to the argument that I've put forth for 17 years, that we need to do a fee study for the long term, the upturns and the downturn. So we don't have to lay, lay off if things go bad. So I, I, I'm willing to push that out of this meeting for, for separate issues. But I would like to get it handled and get a definitive analysis and decision on whether those fees are correct for the long term for the town.
Okay. As, as long as everyone understands the activities that we do day to day are not all fee related.
Well, we understand that. I don't, I'm not sure why it's,
So it wouldn't cover a hundred percent.
A question based upon a huge difference in the two. And if you're, if you're basing a, comparing the fixed expense and a variable expense, and the variable expense can go up and down with the construction market. We need to understand that. We don't want to have, we don't want to have layoffs.
Well, and the way the revenues are projected, that should never happen because we don't count on the fixed revenue to cover operating costs. Only there's a portion of that that is ongoing and the rest is just a,
Are you going to, are you going to do the study or not?
Yes, but I just want you to understand that part as well. It means it's important to understand how the revenues are projected. And we don't use all, we only use a small portion of one time cost because we have been able to project what the one time cost is for construction sales tax. And the rest of it is considered one time and it's never used for operating expenses, including salaries. That, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sure this has been handled somewhere else before. I mean, this is not an issue just we have the entire, everyone who runs the government has it's issue. And so there's probably some standards that I don't know. I could be wrong, but my business mind says, hey, problem. And I'd like to understand on paper rather than verbally subjective information that we're, that, that we do have a fiscally responsible way to continue to govern through good times and bad.
Go, um, back a slide here. Um, the next item, actually, before we move to the next item, I just also wanted to point out since the page two of your packet was the detailed revenues. Um, I just wanted to quickly point out how those tie back, um, in case you're wondering to page one. So on page one, it is the general fund summary. And as Kerry had said, the revenues are broken out between the top section there, which is the total fund operating revenues. And then down, I don't know, two thirds of the page, you'll see the one time sources and uses. So if you take the construction related revenue line of that section and add it to the operating revenues, those will total to the revenues as they're shown on page two. So another, okay. So, um, I've got up on the slide for the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. If you take, um, off of page, uh, one, the 11,409,992 for total general fund operating revenues in the proposed column. And you add that to the construction related revenue of 2,343,648. Those two numbers together total on page two to the 13,753,570, which is total general fund revenues for the 24 proposed budget. So the, so page one slices and dices the revenues between operating and one time. But page two is the, the, the summary of all the revenues combined. That construction. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So in the, um, in the operating revenue shown up in the total general fund operating revenue of the budget of that 11,409, there's 800,000 included in there for construction sales tax revenue. And that number was obtained by looking back historically on, in times where Cave Creek was slow or low in conservative in our construction sales tax. That's about how much the lowest that we've collected in sales tax revenue. So that amount is put into operating revenue. The rest is considered one time. It's all shown and reflected as part of the budget. It's just listed as a one time source. In other words, not expected or relied upon for our day to day operating revenues. Any questions? On that?
So we, we'll get it right. On the top of page two, under 2023, 2024 proposed budget column, you have 3,012,300 as your sales track tax construction.
Correct.
A portion of that is, is put somewhere else on page one and the other portion of it is here, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the, let me, let me just make sure I'm understanding what you said. Of that $3 million,
Yes.
3,012,300, a portion of it is shown, um, under line one, local taxes of that 7,883, 800,000 is shown there.
I got it.
Yeah. The rest is under the construction related revenue.
Okay. So it's a, it's a combination.
Correct.
All right. Could you put a note somewhere?
That explains that. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So from Monday, the next item that we had was the breakdown of rodeo fees, events and expenses. And you'll see on page, yeah, it's on page two of your packet under the miscellaneous revenue section, which is the last section on page two. The third line from the bottom is for rodeo. There's a, um, we're estimating the proposed budget at 25,000 for fiscal year 2024. The expenses for that, for rodeo are shown on page 13 of your packet under development services, rodeo division. And the, the operating expenses for rodeo are at 27,000. But also included in rodeo is the 350,000 for the restrooms under capital there. So the revenue is under the expenses by 2,000. Not including capital.
And when we get the restrooms in there, we're going to try to sponsor other events, right? To, to make up for that.
Yes.
Capital.
But not only that, then we would be able to reevaluate and increase the fees for using it because there would be restrooms available. So that also would go up.
We said it in six dollars per ticket on the rodeo. Am I remembering that correctly?
Three, three.
This is 25,000. Yeah.
Any further questions on rodeo? Okay. So we'll move forward to the, the next item from Monday night was a proposal of adding 200,000 to the trails and parks division of development services towards construction of new pathways in town core. This is not in the current budget that's in the pages in front of you. It's a proposal
for discussion.
For discussion.
This was to fix the, the walkways over in the bar area downtown, correct?
Some of them. There's, there's one that we will be negotiating with, um, that would be done by the property owner. There are other areas that could be prioritized and the last meeting Luke was not here. And so I wanted to have that discussion when he was, he was here today.
Because that's quite a bit of a safety concern. And I think that's why we registered it that way.
Uh, what we thought initially was if the town is going to cover the cost of construction, that we would be able to hopefully negotiate with the property owner on providing an easement for that, for the pathway. We have to get the easements.
Which pathway are we talking about?
There, um, there's several, there's one at the old town dump. There's one, um, circle K. And I forget what the other one is.
But then the road property in between, uh, the plaza in between the old town dump and circle K are the three major.
But between the roadhouse and title.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
It's what we're going to cover between the Buffalo and the, uh, and Harold's. You've already got Ellen Hannel's that one understood from the other day.
At Harold's.
Harold's.
Harold's. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But other fees for that or costs for that or?
Where we had talked about, it was the other side of the road. It's the north side of the roadway that was causing the problem.
Right.
Right. Yeah. So the north side seemed to, is the biggest concern. We'd have to get the easements, but I mean, there, there's more work to it. Luke could explain.
Do we have any idea what the, that piece on the north side is going to cost? I mean, that's, looks like a drainage nightmare to me.
That's, uh, that's why if we were going to do something, we would, staff would propose $200,000 basically in, not to exceed $200,000 to get that all done, uh, considering the grading and drainage. Each parcel along that stretch kind of has its own little, um, unique bag of misfit toys that we would have to work through. Probably a, a combination of stamped asphalt, like what was done in front of the Legion and the Black Mountain Feed. Because of the drainage. So that, that's not necessarily as cheap as what we, what we can usually accommodate with the natural path, natural surface pathway.
So the question is, do we have not put that in the budget? Would you like to put it in the budget?
The answer is from this guy is yes. Let's do it.
Well, what, I mean, we have to get the easements and do some design. So is it feasible to complete that and, and spend the money in the fiscal year? Through.
That's always the question. Yes. Uh, if, because we've got history going back with those properties. Bambi's files go back decades on those properties, trying to acquire easements. So it's one of those outside of frontier town. Uh, you know, we've got a map of what's still yellow trails or pathways that need to be constructed and what's red, what is constructed. This is really that last, last piece. So it's a, a question of now or never. Either we're going to do it now and really.
Is they have concern about the safety down there?
Absolutely.
Do you recommend putting it in?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Do it.
But I have a question. Uh, is this separate and distinct then from improvements to the medians?
It would be yes.
And is that in here also?
Yes, we'll cover that. Okay.
Just to comment to Luke, uh, I saw that map with the yellow pieces. That would really be, uh, great information for this council to see. We have a lot of trails and there's just a few places that need to be fixed. So that's progress.
Where did you come up with a 200,000 figure?
Um, the, what we've spent, I mean, going back to the projects we've done recently in front of the Legion and in front of Black Mountain Feed where we've done the stamped asphalt surface, which everybody really seems to like. That's kind of the going rate for that finish. It's very nice and holds up very well. It's very durable. So you, you're spending a little bit more for the quality and, and the look. And you're not spending so much on the backend with maintenance and keeping it up. So.
Okay. But, but so it's sufficient for the current amount of trails that you need to finish.
We believe so. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The, um, next item from, that we have on our list from Monday night was the gateway trailhead and the request of the trail map.
So because I wasn't here Monday and my GIS skills are quickly deteriorating, having not been exposed to it every day. I, I quickly put together this map that shows the, the green dot is the town of Cave Creek property, essentially where the gateway trailhead, which we've got grant funding for is the red line. Is the current trail, actually all the red lines on there are current publicly dedicated legal trails. I drew an arrow down across Carefree Highway, indicating that it's a connection to the Phoenix and Orin Preserve. All of those trails, as, as I stated, are publicly dedicated trails that go through subdivisions such as Los Ventanas, Estata de Choya, Estata de Choya one and two, and then through dedicated properties all the way into the park and beyond. So I believe the, the concern was putting a trailhead in an area that didn't have access to publicly dedicated trails and the worry of having trespass occur. This is not the case with this, with this location.
So how far up Cave Creek does it actually go?
It looks like it stops right at just north of Ernie Bunch's house. So what is Desert Enclave, the subdivision there at the end of 50th Street? It's right, right where the green intersection looks like that little earthworm there next to it.
So this is the piece that connects the, all the stuff to the south, all the way to Mexico probably.
Yes, but simply.
And all into the north, it will connect all the way to.
Spurcross, Maricopa Regional and beyond.
Well, we're only doing it if we get a grant, correct?
Well, we have a grant and it's, it's really at this point, really inadequate to do anything substantial. So we're hoping to build on that and over time be able to, to do it. So why we ask for it in the CIP every year is if we get the grant, the additional grant funding where we can go in and, and match and do something substantial there, then we're going to do it.
Okay.
We just didn't want to kind of out of sight, out of mind on something like this because it is a nice area and would be a, a great asset to the community.
Really kind of dumb question, but why would we pave a, a trailhead? Wouldn't we just want to leave it as, as dirt or rock? I mean, I pull my horse trailer in dirt and rock all the time.
Correct. Yeah. We don't, we, we don't want to pave. So there's been talk about doing a ribbon curb around a parking area that would be a natural surface. So stabilized DG. there's been talk about doing a ribbon curb around a parking area that would be a natural surface, so stabilized DG.
The next item is money for parking options in the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. That also requires further council discussion.
I mentioned at the last budget session that we would be discussing one of the parking arrangements at the April seventeenth executive session. But I didn't know if Luke had any public information to share about any of the other parking arrangements.
Private parking arrangements.
The staff's made aware that the owner of the Buffalo Chip has acquired additional lands adjacent to their property and will be working with the town to do a more dedicated parking there between the Cowboy Company and the Buffalo Chip. And, you know, as staff is also going to, as Carrie mentioned, just give you an update at, at each session regarding additional parking options, working with the landowner of a vacant piece of property in town. And that'll be coming before council and a public process, obviously, but just give you an update on that as well. So this is really the area east of Schoolhouse Road that's stressed from lack of parking. Are, might be getting relieved or solved in, in good order here soon.
How many spaces are there?
Just ballparking about a hundred and twenty-five, maybe a few more that Buffalo Chip is going to bring to bear. And then if all goes well with the other iron in the fire, about another eighty to a hundred spaces there. And that's within close proximity to this, the bar area, the bar and entertainment area. So upwards of two hundred parking spaces added to the inventory there and potentially still more to go.
So this, the Buffalo Chip property, are they going to actually delineate the spaces? Or will it just be gravel for people to park whatever way they want?
That is where the town comes in and, and how we're going to work together to get that accomplished, yes.
Okay.
Is, is Buffalo Chip wanting to actually own that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item is the breakdown for the magistrate court.
Have a hand, this pink handout. This was just a very kind of a rough analysis, but it gives you a good picture of the cost to run the court, what the town pays and what the town of Carefree pays based on public records and our own information on what the town pays. So we're, this was for fiscal year twenty-two, we paid a hundred and seventy-eight, one oh five in fees to Carefree based on the terms of the contract. And then we covered some additional costs for this facility. And, and so that total roughly a hundred and ninety-four thousand, give or take. The Carefree total cost to run the court from their budget in twenty-two was three hundred and seventy-one. So the town actually pays a little more than fifty percent of the total cost. But they take on all of the burden, they hire, they fire, they, they're managing those employees. And then if you had, if you were running the court separately, you can look at the carefree expenditures for personnel and those costs would be essentially duplicated for each community, so you're combining that into one court for all the personnel. So if you look at the, the kind of tanish line under carefree expenditures for salary and benefits and what they pay for supplies and contract services, et cetera. Those costs would not go away if you ever wanted to have an in-house court again. So it makes sense to keep the contract and to just move forward.
Yeah, I think the only issue was, I thought, I thought perhaps wrong, want to read here, that we got some portion of the tickets in Cave Creek. If you're saying I'm wrong.
No, no, they get paid to Carefree directly, that they, they operate it and the fees come in and they have, they take the fees.
So we do not get any revenue if a ticket is written in Cave Creek.
That's correct, that they get all the fees, Carefree Cave Creek, yes, they get all the fees, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's, it's still a good deal.
It's still a good deal.
How much do they make?
Well, their total costs, the total cost of the court is three seventy-one six. And we're paying, of that total, we're paying about a hundred and seven, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, so we're paying a little more than fifty percent. And then they, and the revenues, well.
I'm curious to see what their revenues are.
They're, well, they have to turn around and pay it to the state, is the marshal here? I don't think he knows how those fees go.
Do we know what they're going with?
I'll see if there's revenue in their budget.
I guess the question is those revenues before the state's taking their cut or after it's taken their cut? So we, we don't, don't know that info.
Well, if they show the revenue coming in, they'd have to show a transfer out if they were going to put it in the budget that way. So we'll take a look at their budget for revenues.
As far as our budget process today, this, this is the budget.
Yes, yes.
This should be an offline.
Yeah, is it, the contract itself is under municipal court that is on page sixteen.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Carrie, probably this is a few explanations, this is kind of a courtesy service for the residents of the community. You don't actually have to do this, but not a lot of people want to drive down to the inner city for appearances, so it's even though it's not a moneymaker, it's a courtesy to residents and individuals in the community that have a need to respond to court summonses. So it's a goodwill gesture, maybe you could say by the municipality. I mean, that's just my pitch, but for those people who have to appear, it's nice to go local instead of going down to the one-on-one or two.
Is, brother, is that why the eighty percent goes to, seeing that the only thing that doesn't make sense here as well, the money goes to the Superior Court, whoever.
Well, because the courts are in charge, actually, the Arizona Supreme Court actually is the overriding jurisdiction of these local magistrate courts.
That's true.
So they have more legislative pull than the League of Cities and Towns, and they have put together a formula, which has been true for many years and it's enhanced for state priorities, not local. But at the end of the day, your citizens and your visitors appreciate the opportunity, one would think, to be able to appear locally instead of downtown. So it's it's like the visitor center, but for people who have been given an extra ticket.
Okay, so our next item is the MC SO contract. And Mayor, you had said you would like cross, traffic enforcement issues in town addressed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
And since that time, I've read, I reread
Okay.
The, the traffic study, pedestrian study, and it recommended all kinds of enforcement, six months of concentrated enforcement and then after that more. So we've got that recommendation sitting on that study that, to my knowledge, you've never done anything to implement.
Six months of concentrated law enforcement?
Yes.
Enforcement, okay.
That, that was the portion dealing with, doing the speeds down on Cave Creek Road.
Okay. All right, well, that doesn't take budget, so we'll work on that.
I, I'm kind surprised it doesn't take budget.
For, for additionally, you want, you, well, we can work with MC SO for additional.
Yeah. Well, maybe, I'm, I've not been able to get any satisfaction out of my conversations, private conversations, but the the, I guess the issue that I brought up the other night was whether we should be contracting for our own off to the, I have no idea of feasibility, but I'm just trying to open up everybody's mind to the fact that we've got some outrageous speeders right down Cave Creek Road that just fly through town with seemingly forgotten consequences.
You just wash them right out the window.
I, 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 the budget, for the budget, I just want to make sure that if, if you had some ideas that we had budget money, if you don't have ideas, we haven't developed the ideas.
Well, the marshal could address this, but I believe that Carefree pays extra on their contract for additional law enforcement, is that correct?
My understanding was that we're paying extra too. He showed me the contract that had extra money in there for something.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the town of Cave Creek back, I want to say it was two thousand and eight, maybe two thousand and seven. When I started in two thousand and one, we did actually have a dedicated traffic car whose I want to say sole function, but primary function was traffic enforcement in the town core and the outlying roads. During the budget cuts, you know, we, we did cut that, we currently don't pay for any additional traffic enforcement in the contract, like Carefree does, Carefree during peak periods, as I said, Monday night, does have a traffic car dedicated just to traffic enforcement.
Well, then let's get the sheriff, the sheriff captain and myself and whoever and sit, because I heard that we have extra money in there and that he was willing, he, that us, that's not the manager of downtown, thought it might be a good idea to take that money out of the sheriff's contract, which would then make it available for us to do our own enforcement of some kind.
It looks to me to offline, we can talk about that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to again speak against that and would also request that if you're going to have that discussion, we have it in a public session with the full council. If I can respectfully make a suggestion, and I don't know what the marshal would respond to this, but why not request the council to approve additional specific funds for a one-year augmentation for that specific circuit purpose? Get a cost and try it first for a year to see if you are pleased with the results.
The, the issue with them was they feel like their hands are completely tied, the sheriff's office will tell you for an hour and a half that their hands are completely tied by these court decisions and all the things that have happened in the past. I, I, but we can have them come in and explain that to the entire council, maybe that's what we ought to do.
Well, we've been through a lot of different phases up here, there was a time, many years ago, we used the sheriff's posse. And that may or may not have been the answer, they did do other things besides, obviously they did the traffic enforcement, they did other things here in the community, but I'm just respectfully suggesting that, I think there's full support for what you want among the group up here listening to you. But I would just suggest if you can do it within the infrastructure that we already currently have a relationship with and augment a healthy amount of money and have it dedicated to that service and hold it accountable and give it a twelve-month period for the next budget cycle, you might be more in a position to make a decision regarding these types of issues going forward.
Why can't we hire a deputy marshal and put him in the car?
Well, we've had that in the past as well, I mean, there's a lot of different things that have been tried and history can provide you why they're no longer here. But I think you have support for specific augmented funding for this purpose.
Yeah, we don't need to engineer it here. All I'm doing is, right, ideas like this and like this and bring those out, find a solution to the traffic enforcement issues. If you need money, this is the time to ask for the money. But it, it needs to be effective, in, in my view, if the sheriff can't write tickets for whatever reason, paying them more money doesn't do you any good. So I, I'll turn it over to staff.
Came up Monday night, we're researching.
We, and, and if it's, if it's not too much, we can take out a contingency. If you think that's unreasonable, then we ought to make a change between now and the time we approved the budget. We need to have more enforcement. The forty-three miles an hour needs to come down.
But my question then is, is this money that you're talking about in addition to the recommendations made in the pedestrian study? Or, or are we going to take another look as a new team up here on those recommendations and determine what we prefer?
The, the study recommended six months of concentrated enforcement, which I don't think ever happened. And then, and then concentrated enforcement every year thereafter, we have not done that other than informally telling the sheriff we're unhappy and they have had a higher visibility since then.
Right, but I understand what you're saying, but I'm just, because Hal is here and is are you asking for additional funds for the speed bumps in addition to what we're talking about here?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, no, we did not add any, we have the speed bumps. We did not have any other ones that met the cost benefit ratio. Well, the speed tables, yes, the speed tables.
But my, my thought was that we were going to have another presentation by you as an update to our new members on this council to talk about the recommendations in that study and then make a final decision based on our new, our new membership and what they think.
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I believe that what was asked of me was to make sure that the report got circulated. Which we, we did this week, everyone should have gotten a copy of.
It came out this afternoon, we got it.
I don't think that's sufficient, I would like to have another presentation before we allocate money.
We can certainly schedule.
I would like to have another public discussion. Because I know that there's not consensus within the community, and that may be a minority opinion, but I think that they deserve the respect to have another discussion, since we have three new elected members on this council.
I'll work with the town manager.
Carrie agrees with that and that the mayor does, I mean, it's just my thought.
Well, and, and I maybe, maybe just make traffic enforcement a part of that and have the, the captain come in or the sheriff, whoever they need to send in here to if, 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 maybe the rest of council should hear what he told me, mine was just a private conversation.
Well, I'd like to hear what he told, I think that's a good idea.
I, I think it makes sense, I think, I think they're connected, whether it's additional enforcement or speed tables or a combination thereof, it's still all about pedestrian safety and reducing speed on Cave Creek Road.
You're definitely correct.
Okay, the next item was town council, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget of forty in the town council budget, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget of forty thousand dollars for community grants. That was left in the budget at that amount. But there was an update, we were going to update the process for awarding those grant monies.
And that doesn't need to be done right now.
Right, right.
On that discussion about community grants, we're going to look at criteria, the whole process of how that happens. That's important.
The next item was the traffic counts at Schoolhouse, Spurcross, Rancho Mañana and Stumbleinas. The traffic study will be completed before fiscal year twenty twenty-three year end. And we increased the fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget in the Public Works Department Roads Division. Their capital budget by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for traffic signalization on Cave Creek Road.
Could you be a little more specific? Actually, the traffic signalization could be traffic calming of some sort, not necessarily signalization. It could be stop signs or or whatever, but we've added the two hundred and fifty thousand pending an update on the traffic study and a presentation to council on the update. And we're including not only Schoolhouse, but Spurcross, Rancho Mañana, Stumbleinas area to see what would be an appropriate place or places for slowing traffic.
Yeah, I believe we talked about some perhaps some stop signs or something to slow slow things down. I mean, if you ever try to get in or out of Rancho Mañana at certain points in the day, it's almost impossible. Same thing going on to Spurcross Road. Just try and make it a left hand turn at some point in the afternoon going on to Spurcross. It's pretty much impossible. You may wait five minutes.
Are those areas specifically mentioned in the traffic study? So just the Schoolhouse Road was in in the Y two K study, so we'd have to add, that's why we're adding in the Rancho Mañanas, Spurcross, Stumbleina areas. You're adding the potential of funding. We're having them look at those intersections, those areas as well. Very good.
That's an awful lot of money for just a study, is it?
No, that's not for the study. The study will be complete this fiscal year with current funds. This is actual whatever recommendations.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. The next item, I believe, was just discussed. That was the phase one and phase two speed table study that was sent out to council by email. So we will follow up on that. And the next item is was examine the gas lines below the street for gas lighting. This requires further council discussion.
Yeah, what what we talked about was when you and I had the back and forth of at some point we'll talk about what different options are for lighting. For instance, I have LED lighting on my flagpole in my yard. And it's the solar lights by two o'clock in the morning. Those solar lights are pretty useless. So it just, we need to think through whatever lighting we're going to put downtown.
Well, before, we need to understand what the costs are, right? What the what the purpose is, because we don't, if if this is mood lighting, that's one thing, if it's lighting, we're dealing with safety issues, that's another.
Understand, and that's why we what we said is we need to study the problem. We're not looking at solving the problem this year's budget. We're just going to take a look at what are different options that we could do, but we need to know is gas as part of that is gas lighting available? Are those lines still there? Are they still operational? I mean, that's what we had talked about.
Well, I'm trying to find a way out of this. I mean, we don't know enough to put money in the budget for anything.
No, no, this was just to to study. We need the, I believe, Public Works said that they could find out if those gas lines are still there. We need to find out if the gas lines are still there and operational before we can even look at something like that.
They they're not there. What's the purpose of of the light?
Mr. Mayor, now I can help out here. Since incorporation, there's been a lot of different visions for what downtown Cave Creek should like. And as we all know, economics make more of a reality out of what we'd like to have than sometimes our best hopes and purposes. If you walk through Cave Creek today, there's at least five staff iterations on what streetscape looks like. We've got, I believe, at least three studies on the shelf inside the main building. It goes back as far as Mayor Davis and the the attempt in those times was walkability, the involvement of horses, shade, Ramadas, things like that. It was small town, small scale, maybe hokey. But it was designed to recognize the fact that everybody in the community who makes a living by protect by working with the tourism and the visitor and the resident trade has to provide some basic things. And as I've said before, maybe it's corny and not helpful, but the downtown is the town's living room. The first impression that you have when you come to Cave Creek is not really the canyons that you don't see when you're in the downtown area. And I just, it's the point of being obnoxious and tell me, give me a timeout. I really want to lobby for the medians because we we did use to maintain them and we had landscape. We've had a lot of different iterations on that as well. And the other night, Mr. McGuire mentioned boulders and so forth, architectural landscaping. So I'm just promoting the fact that the most important trail to me in town is from the town boundary with Carefree up to the other bound town boundary with Carefree. And if we want to retain businesses and have a certain destination value for people coming here temporarily or on the weekends and so forth, parking is one of those issues, speed, protest, all the things that you've mentioned, I think are part of that matrix. I just want to be the one lone guy who or with others who agree lobby for an improvement in some character flavor of Cave Creek as the buildings come and go and the restaurants come and go and so forth. Can you get somebody to walk safely up through the community and do retail and restaurant and nightclub and so forth and park the car? But what is our cultural identity? It's a mining town. It's not really a cowboy town. There's a lot of history here in the land and there's a lot of history in the downtown. It doesn't have to be gaslights, but what I'm lobbying for is restoration of medians and maintenance. The the path that the staff is working on right now for completion. But some type of aesthetic standard. And am I getting into signs and sandwich board signs? I'm not talking about any of that kind of stuff, but if we could have a consistent, some type of not architectural design, but just something when you pulled into town, make you look like you wanted to get out of the car, walk around with the kids or the grandparents or whatever, and probably buy something or a sample. And we don't have uniform lighting through the town. Now, years ago, and I was even more pie in the sky at that point, so I apologize. But we really did meet with APS and tried to get the overhead electric lines buried. And it's not the biggest study, but it's something that would be a long term goal. Now, the high tension wires are now coming up to town and they've redone the substation, so that may no longer be possible. But we do need to have some improvement for the pedestrians at night to walk with with the lighting the way it is. And if we can convert away from and not even not even lobbying for dark skies, but if we can work away from the sodium vapor lights and get into something that are smaller scale that are spotted downward on where people are walking or parking and so forth, gas lights is nothing more than a placeholder. It may not be something that makes any sense whatsoever. But as what Carefree has done with their remodeling over there, the structures that they've chosen, not so much the arches, but the lighting and other things. They're attempting to communicate, this is where you want to stop and park and spend money. And I just think we have that potential because our business corridor really goes from town hall all the way up to the Carefree border. And if we have walkability and sufficient parking, can we partner with the town and use some of their taxpayer money to invest in an improved appearance for the downtown? So lighting is just one component, but like when you do the crosswalks, could you maybe have a crosswalk if it's a raised table? But it could be done some way with like stone when Derek Goddard was a mayor years ago, and it's all gone, but he had that pink granite, but in in the median of Central Avenue and he had crosswalks. It's all torn out and forgotten, but every council period has its attempt to try to codify or beautify your experience when you come to the town. If we can just do something like that, and and I and I know it depends on money. But I just think the first impression of somebody coming to Cave Creek, and I'll get off this, I'll stop my speech, but I love the Boy Scout sign and I'm so sad it was no doubt by the driver. And I was always going to lobby Kerry for a duplicate up there at the other end of town. Because if you're of a certain age, the sign looks like an old national park sign. It's retro, which I'm sure that millennials don't even, you know, they wouldn't buy that, but at least it felt Cave Creek. It felt small town. It felt folksy. And so that's all I'm proposing promoting is can we do something with the downtown? We we know the places we like to go and work. We know where we'd like to sit outside and so forth, and you have company, you know, places where you'd like to have them, but if you go to historic areas, whether it's in Europe or the United States, and you look for the type of lighting they have, the parking, I mean, metal signs that we have in town, I would lobby to have this held, turn it to plant holders and take the advertising down. We have advertising on our phones and our TVs and everything else. Use those existing poles for some type of hanging vegetation when you redo the the medians. So I promised to stop, so I will, but it's not necessarily gaslight, Mr. Mayor, but if you would entertain, if you tolerate some of these things that were beating up your meeting with this discussion, I think there's some things we can do to be competitive on a regional basis with why people should come here. And then some other time off to get about how we can do special events in a creative way, too, but I won't do that. Thank you for your time.
I agree. We we need a plan for downtown with the aesthetics taken into account. I just, so I I would lobby for a comprehensive plan, which includes the 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 traffic, the pedestrian safety, what the place looks like, the medians, the trees, the lighting as a package.
Absolutely.
We can bite off piece by piece over a period of time.
Yeah, and I'm thinking we're going to work on a town core plan. I mean, is that the package?
I think we also have to take a look. At some point, we're going to develop, the state's going to start selling that land in the next couple of years, and I know you have that scheduled for us to talk. When they start doing that, we're going to have to really kind of figure out, what do we want that new portion of Cave Creek to look like? What's the look and feel we want there, too? So when we talk about this plan, I'm sorry. We talk about this plan, we also need to kind of take a look at, do we want it to look like the downtown core? Do we want it to look like new Cave Creek or something else? I mean, those are the things we need to start taking a look at now. Two years goes by in a heartbeat. Particularly the way things are going down with the crazy legislature we've got.
I think, Bob, what you've suggested is a really good idea. However, I also am fearful that we're going to get hung up on on an overall overreaching study on how to how to light, how to landscape. And in the meantime, we're still going to have these eyesores of a median. So I don't want to wait for a whole study. I want us to do something this year to improve the looks of our medians. They are atrocious and it's unconscionable that we should have such eyesores in the middle of our town.
Other council members.
I agree. I mean, I think the medias are the first thing we need to get taken care of, but we need to have, like you suggested, we need to have that longer term look also.
Right, but we need to start somewhere and we know where to start.
We're talking money here.
We have money. We have money. And we should move on to the next one where it says obtain estimates for cost for professional landscape. That's the last item. Mr. Mayor, I actually asked, I know we wanted to talk about it on Monday, but I asked for that to be to have the discussion when Luke was here because Luke has spent years working with the landscape companies in town, is very familiar with it, has a history, knows all about the medians, and we've talked a lot about it, not just this week or last month or whatever. We've we've had conversations and maybe he could suggest how we proceed and work on the medians this coming fiscal year.
We also take a look at how we're going to water the medians.
Or not, that's, or not, yeah, I that's why I asked for Luke to be here, so he could. He could, whatever survives in the desert on its own is what's appropriate. There's not enough water for the medians.
Yeah, the issue is you don't have the natural water flow that you have because you've got concrete or asphalt on both sides, so we have to, we're probably going to have to augment whatever we put in there with some kind of waters, watering schedule.
Okay, there's water trucks.
Um, Mayor, Members of Council, I'd be happy at a at a future council meeting to come in and and give you an exhaustive, here's three to four options we can do. I found in in my time as my short time as Development Services Director and Planning Director before that and my history here at the town, you you get more done with the smaller bites and just being persistent. I think the the way the medians are present a similar type circumstance where to go in and and wholesale redo them all under one master contract with one master plan would be extremely expensive. And what I've also found and as Councilman Ogerton alluded to, the different, you know, five different perceptions of what streetscape is. I I kind of chastise Councilman McGuire earlier today about when he said streetscape, I I no longer use the term streetscape. I think the right of way along Cave Creek Road in the town core is is not streetscape. It's consistent of the medians, the pathways, the parking, lighting to a degree, signage to a degree, all of those things. And I don't like using streetscape because it has had different it's meant different things to different people at different points in time. What I would propose if were I you is let's look at what our inventory of medians is. And let's identify our worst looking median that we all agree on that is the worst and allow us to prepare and present a plan on, here's some options on how to do that. And we can incrementally bit by bit bring all of our medians up and as, hey, you know, maybe this median has a theme of art, maybe this median has a theme of, you know, decorative things or cactus, those types of things. So.
How many landscape companies do we have in Cave Creek?
Brick and mortar, one, mom and pops upwards of six, seven.
Why don't we talk to those folks and say, why don't you each take a half a mile and figure out a plan to put it in and give them a contract to do that?
We have, one has, that we had a consulting town arborist, actually, our current consulting town arborist was the town arborist on staff for a good many years and put in most of the medians when they were put in. I, you know me, I grew up here, Councilman Ogerton, that there used to just be a suicide lane through town. Two lanes each side, no medians, so the there there weren't always medians, so there are ways to to get it done.
So I guess the the question would be, how much money should we put in the budget to you know, proceed and put it down to? We need sort of a ballpark number to.
We we needed this year number for our budget.
Yes.
And we need a long term strategy for what we do. And you know, all we need this year is this, but we'd like to hear from the other two from other council members. We haven't spoken yet, Tom and.
I I like Luke's idea of trying to start with one median. Let's see where that goes. And also, I think it's important that we're starting with a town core general plan. That will be an important part of it.
I disagree. I don't want to start with one. I want to do it all. You know, we are a very financially viable town right now. And we can afford to do it right. I don't think we should depend on volunteerism. I think that we need a quote from one of our respectable landscape companies to work collaboratively with us. They might be able to do some of it as in kind service. And I think we can be as creative as possible and spend the money to do it right and make our community proud. When are we taking public comment?
Because it's.
Why is that? At the end, I was just curious. When you're, when we're finished, there will be a public comment when we're finished. Okay.
Yeah, they can look better somewhere on the line. We lost a few more that we had from the original plan that we had approved.
Okay, you have enough direction then for this year and for planning for future?
Well, they wanted a number of what we were thinking.
A a number of.
They wanted an estimate of how much they should.
Right.
Yeah, we have time.
And and be generous. We're being generous here.
It would, I mean, it would really be a two part. So the first part would be soliciting a professional to prepare plans to do a wholesale exhaustive revamp of the medians. So that would be a master services contract. And then we would need to program into the CIP in future budget years. So next year it wouldn't happen. But next year, next fiscal year, excuse me, would at least be the planning and the design of of what would have, what would happen and what would need to happen.
It's medians. It shouldn't take that long. Give six months to to do the plan and then six months to implement the plan. It's not that hard.
Yeah, I guess he's, we're not thinking about the entire scope. In particular, we would start with the medians.
That would be a total improvement project, though.
Could could we get the medias designed and implemented this year?
Knowing how long it took to do the streetscape portion and I.
I used that word again.
I know. I hate it. I think this would be difficult personally, but sure, a year.
This is early phases of the budget, so you come back with your proposal list.
Okay.
You've heard the, you've heard that it's a priority.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Public comment is at the end.
At the end, we'll we'll get to it.
This is what?
No, Bruce, Bruce, you're going to wait. That's that's the that's the way the meeting is going to run, so we're going to wait. No, Bruce, Bruce, you're going to wait. That's that's the, that's the way the meeting is going to run. So we're going to wait until the end of it.
We're nearly done.
We're just about.
Nearly done.
Sorry, our last slide is the summary of changes that we've had since Monday night. So for the general fund budget, it increased three hundred and sixty-three thousand four fifty for the items that we have already been through on the previous slides but are bulleted below. Um, and then for the enterprise funds, those are the next three listed there for wastewater, cave creek water, desert hills water. That was for the additional two and a half percent compensation pay. And all of the other fund balance or all the other fund budgets remained the same. So anything that was added with today's session was the additional two hundred thousand for the sidewalks and.
And you're going to get us a price on the medians.
Yes, we will get some estimated costs.
I I sent a quest or request, um, I think maybe Tuesday morning. And and I want to see the number that we're budgeting for the complete review of our ordinances. It's in the package. If I want to hear that number.
Mayor and council member, we went over each individual department line by line. And are you, we have budgeted for town code or other consulting biz consulting fees are in various departments. If you're talking about something in the town code to review and make changes that are non-development services related, you will find those in professional services under the administration budget. If you're talking about something related to zoning or subdivision, any any development services related consulting services in development services under professional services line, there's thirty thousand dollars. Those monies are not specifically designated to a specific project. We put those funds in every year because every year something comes up with the elected officials to look at something. And so once the council meets with the planning commission, you identify the areas that you would like to focus on. You rank them in order. That is when you use those funds to work on those if if you need the funds.
Okay, and my fear is that we'll do it piecemeal and there won't be interaction between those various purposes that you've just described. So that's why I keep pushing on it, Carrie.
And I won't know and you won't know until you have the meeting with the planning commission, which we said would be after the budget, late June or early July.
And you're suggesting, and you're suggesting that the planning commission will advise us on what we should be looking at?
No, not at all. It's a council meeting where the planning commission is invited. And you have a conversation amongst yourselves and with the planning commission staff will also be present for any input that you ask for, but it's the council's decision on what the priorities are. And you have to rank them so that we can get them done. We can't do everything all at one time. So we 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 always prioritize the matters. Where I don't know how it will be lumped together or broken apart. I I don't know until you have that meeting and you have that discussion.
And we think thirty thousand will cover that conversation.
Well, if if you need more, there's contingency there, you know, there's enough money in the.
There's one point two million in contingency. We can cover it with that. Even if we look at all the ordinances, it shouldn't cost that much.
Thank you.
I think that wraps up our changes from and discussions from Monday night.
Want to bring up before we go to public comment?
Nothing. And just in terms of future meetings, we will now begin putting this in a book like format and kind of finalizing things. There's other pieces of the the budget that are required to be in there. And we'll have one more work session to discuss the budget as needed. It will be on the May first agenda. That's a regular council meeting at six o'clock. And then again, the second meeting in May will be the public hearing intended of budget adoption. And June fifth would be the resolution to approve the final budget, June fifth.
Another comment?
Bruce Arlen.
Mayor, Council, uh, sorry, I jumped the gun earlier. I was anxious. As you know, I wrote all of you of a an email about the mediums with that I called the meridians. So sorry about that, too. And I said in there, the day that the mediums were taken out, all the canopy trees, the charm, the tone of the town, everything was the day I began to long to replace it. And it was, it was a mistake. Now I find out, thankfully, you guys all want to restore it. I think you all do, but it seems that way. So hearing the comments tonight, um, I I would just urge everybody to understand. And I, so I disagree with Luke Housman regarding this idea. You do not have a design for this medium. Oh, and then a design for this medium. It's called disunity. The town needs to be unified visually. It's a single town, a single core. The minute you do what he suggested, and I'm not saying he's firm on it, but it was an idea. Uh, but I reject that idea because what will happen is it will spin out of control. And the town will look like a hodgepodge. It just won't work from a design sense, which is something I'm highly experienced at. So it has to be a unified field, a single plan. As Councilwoman Royer talked about, um, and as Councilman uh, Rhodes says, it's not that hard. It's just not like, it's not that difficult. Professionals design, it all gets costed out and you figure it out. It can all be done rather quickly. It's not the kind of thing that you have a lot of angst over. You want to do it, do it. And then everybody will be thrilled. The town will be transformed frankly, and we'll have a rallying uh, feeling around the whole town. The town will literally be transformed because physically it will be transformed uh, into something that we either used to have or something even better. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Anna Marsolo.
Anna Marsolo Citizen. Wow. Public safety in in welfare is in the oath that you take. It should be the absolute first, most important thing to think about. The speeding, the lack of enforcement has gotten out of hand. I wondered if the money, the revenue from ticketing drivers were coming to us, would we have a more progressive uh, way to inspire, to make you understand? It's out of control. It's so hard to get out of my neighborhood, Blue Ridge, Surrey, Carriage. Every fifteen to twenty minutes, we have sirens now. Most of them are traffic related. It's just really, it has to be the most important thing that you do is for your citizens. Okay, the streetscape, it's a beautiful word. Tom, it's a beautiful word. Because you remember when the mayor and when our staff came up with streetscaping. It at Brian's barbecue, that whole area is part of the streetscape where the Prickly Pear Hotel is. That was all part of creating a streetscape. Big girls, Brooke, I love her dearly. She bought the building next to it. Next thing I knew, the three polyvary trees were gone. That was part of the required streetscape. They're gone. Why? So she can add another twelve tables and chairs. Look what happened at Prickly Pear, where that patio is, where the tables and the seating, that was a beautiful drainage wash. There were two beautiful muskie trees. Plants galore. They're all gone. So they can put in a patio for more tables and chairs. The medians, the plants are dying. Those are mature trees. If you have to buy them, they're five hundred to a thousand dollars. You're cheating our citizens, me included, from what, from neglect, from whatever reason. Why are there five trees with mistletoe that are half dead? Why wasn't that caught earlier? There are dead plants in there that I, you don't even bother taking out. It's a disgrace. How could you drive down the way I do and not see it? And the narrow medians, they have smaller plants that you can place in there so they don't look so so bare. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about this. It's our open space. Think about it. It's the town core, open space. We have spur cross, we have the tonto, we have preserves everywhere. But this is the town's open space. It should look nicer. It should be a sense of pride. Yeah, I I'm sorry, I did send you the letter. So you know how I felt about that. I probably shouldn't have talked about it. Take your time. I'm glad you're here. Appreciate it. Please put the money. Catherine Royer said it in simple terms. Councilman Arkansas, you also, but you have to, you can't be thinking so so extreme. And at night, our sidewalks roll up. The only places open are the bars. Concentrate on the daytime. Make what we have experience for the daytime for our tourists and for us important. Thank you so much for your time.
I have no additional speakers. David Smith.
I got twenty-two seconds. Come on. Oh, thank you. Actually, I wanted to say something that I think agrees with what Anna just said. And that is that there are ways around and a lot of ways around having a our own uh, police department. Uh, I've done full-time twenty-four hour staffing in the past. It is a horribly expensive proposition. That's one of the reasons why we pay MCSO so much money. You get twenty-four, seven service from them. I do think that what Carefree once did, and I say, I think they stopped it a year or two ago, and that is to hire, they hired one and a half deputies. One in the car and then the other one kind of roved around and did stuff to fill in to very specifically deal with traffic issues. And, um, you know, if if the town is going to do something, that's the simplest and easiest but costly way to deal with it. Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention is I really think that the council did a great job. I I listened to what you, the questions you asked. I listened to what you came up with to ask of staff. And I think that the questions were pretty good. I'm very concerned about the ordinances. Uh, I don't, I agree that there shouldn't be one gigantic committee. But I do suggest that when you get things going, if you're going to do it with several different groups, including uh, private enterprise, uh, you have some sort of a coordinating committee. Uh, something like it was done with the uh, the rates, except it shouldn't take four and a half years to do the ordinances the way it did the rates. I also want to compliment staff for being responsive to the questions, developing answers and generally making the uh, council feel secure in what staff is doing. That's it.
Kim Mary. I apologize.
Would you spell your last name?
M E H R I N G. So I I appreciate the the mayor and the council too and everybody here listening to, I guess, my three minutes of fame. I I solely came here because I'm concerned about the speed bumps, tables, whatever, the traffic obstruction that that I and other motorists are going to hit as we go to work and come back. And I I don't feel it's going to help with the issue at hand. When when I drive home at night, especially during bike week, there were pedestrians all over. And I'm I'm glad to hear that we're trying to deal with containing the pedestrians on on sidewalks as opposed to on on the road. But I think we we're going to have one drunk person. They're going to see if they can launch their car off of this ramp. And I just don't see it but bothering people that are going to drive to and from work every day. So that was my bit. I'm very happy that there's going to be a separate meeting to discuss this further and I'll be sure to attend that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mary.
David Phelps.
Hi, everybody. And Ernie. David Phelps here, town resident. Uh, celebration this week was phenomenal. Spur cross. Uh, everybody got their photo ops in. It was really nice. One thing I would like to request of this group is let's go back to before we eliminated the fundraising for preservation. And let's reinstate that ordinance and let's quit taking the money out of the spur cross sales tax for the existing uses. And let's start funding preservation again. You know, we guys spent under four hundred thousand on that purchase, which was phenomenal deal. Those deals are out there for a limited time. And let's face it, buying land has been the best single thing we can accomplish within our town. It's the thing we've been most successful at. And it's something that the residents always appreciate. I haven't changed my own mind on the gateway project. I think that is being built for non-residents. And I don't believe it's going to provide a value. And I don't really care about somebody throwing us twenty thousand or seventy thousand or a hundred thousand. If you want another parking lot for the south side of the township, let's go to the rodeo center. That's where we're going to be putting close to a million bucks into that place. And that's where we can have parking for people to access the Cave Creek Park is in it would make them about the same distance to spur cross. And it would give them a little more travel down to the Sunoran Preserve to do their thing. But I just, those are my two things. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No additional speakers.
This is more of a workshop. So I'm going to ask staff if anything else occurs to them in the other comments they'd like to make. A staff, council staff too. I I just want to say one, I wanted to say one thing, and that is we the 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 town has been a colony of its utility systems for twenty years, almost twenty years now. We see the end of the of that phase coming in twenty twenty twenty-seven with the start of the bonds rolling off. And it's time for the town to think about amenities. It's time to think about doing things that other towns do and uh, whatever that might be. We've, we've got some money to spend, so we're not quite as poor as we used to be. And we want to be frugal, wise, uh, but we also want to build, uh, build a town that we want to the future. Because we've got something good here. We want to preserve it. Carrie, do you want to say anything?
Nothing further.
Just one of the things we might want to look at if we're looking at at things for a family kind of events is putting a couple of small playgrounds in. You know, one down on the town core, maybe one over by Swallow West, because they have a lot of little kids over there. Just something to do, you know, want a little covered things. Doesn't have to be big, but that would really enhance, uh, you know, folks coming around, doing things with the families.
We do have one, you know that, yeah, which was just improved by the Kiwanis, which is beautiful. I took my granddad.
No, I'm just talking about adding a couple more because that's the family kind of thing that we're, you know, trying to do. We're trying to get Western family, uh, you know, the. We're trying to get Western family, uh, you know, the historic kinds of things. And I mean, I'm sure we could have it themed appropriately. That's, I think it'd be relatively inexpensive and, and the kind of a neat thing for the neighborhoods.
There's nothing down, down south on Carefree Highway that I know, so that's underserved area. Okay, I'm looking for motion to adjourn. Second.